It was, it was good.
All right.
Just all those.
I just restarted the computer. Are you going to log in separately up there or?
No.
Okay, I'll just stand here for a minute and let people.
I'm not sure why it says post attendee. I'm a little worried.
Yep.
See if it's working. Okay. Yes, whenever you're ready, we can call the roll now.
Body has no staff. My cattle.
Arrow.
On me.
Yes.
Brittany Hopper.
Here.
Vanessa.
Here.
And Miss Lewis.
Here.
A meeting called to order.
Hey, we're meeting at seven thirty eight. If, sorry for the folks who are here, we were a little bit late getting started because we had some technical difficulties. Anyone that's there online, welcome. And I'm sorry, we're just a little bit late getting the technology to work for us. First thing that we have on the agenda tonight is our, we're opening the regular meeting, but at seven forty five, we will recess the regular meeting to reconvene a hearing on application HTZC twenty four oh two submitted by Rebecca Sturm. We'll come back to that at seven forty five. With that in mind, just real brief, for members of the audience who are here, if you wish to speak, we would ask that you go to the podium, state your name and your address. Meeting is being recorded so that we will have a record of everyone who speaks and the information that you wish to share. And for those of you at home, at some point, there will be the opportunity for public participation. When I announce that, then if you wish to participate, you may also unmute and make your comments at that time. And we would ask that everyone, whether you're here or online, be respectful of everyone else when they're speaking and don't carry on private conversations when someone else is speaking to the group.
We have the people who don't have their names showing on the.
We've got two people.
Say who they are.
Just.
So we can record.
Send, if they can send a, a text or a message, or they can just open up your mic and tell us your name, iPad two and Rachel iPad. They don't know who you are, so we would ask for your name so we can record your name into the minutes. Well, they don't want to say it verbally. Like I said, they can send it to us, but we would like to get your names for the record. Okay, let's go forward. Director of zoning is not present tonight. Mike Cannon has had a surgery recently and he'll be out for a while. We don't know for sure how long. I guess he had a hip replacement, so it could be quick or it could be.
Actually, it was his wife.
His wife. Oh, I'm sorry, misunderstood that. It's his wife, not him. Well, he's home looking clear of her then.
That's exactly right.
Well, he may be home longer. She may need a lot of TLC for a while.
She's walking up down the driveway with, on his arm. She's doing good.
Oh, you're seeing him out walking. Well, that's good. I'm glad she's up and walking. Now, you should get out pretty quick with those hip replacements. Many seem to be longer term. All right, going forward. The opportunity to receive new applications, I believe that you have something you wanted to submit, Joe. All right, so we can go ahead and do that prior to our hearing, yes.
You got three minutes.
Thirty seconds. The original's on top.
Thank you.
What you, you will distribute the ones for them.
All we need to find out, yes. And this will be.
I'm on your end in two seconds.
So I ask the members of the commission to write on your copy that this will be application HTZC twenty four oh three.
Thanks. I, I've just got a single lot. It was rezoning from AR one to FR one for Robert and, uh, Robert Piper, um, they've rezoned a couple lots previously or a couple rezonings previously. This one's next to their old house lot. And we're just rezoning it to reconfigure the lot for the house and then provide a new lot next to the house off of Green Cook Road.
Thank you, Joe.
I did note the acreage corrections on the front. That was my, just for the record, I corrected those based on the legal descriptions that we provided you. We had a survey update this week that didn't get caught or last week that didn't get caught, so.
So the gross acreage is two point six oh eight.
Correct.
And the net acreage is, they're not crossed out, so I'm not sure which is what.
It's two point one seven eight for the net.
Oh, seven nine is, is out.
It's correct. Yep. Yeah, I might not have got your.
I was gonna say mine was crossed out.
I was practically doing that before you guys started, so you provided me ample time to get it done.
All right. So let the, we're going to reflect that Mr. Close has indicated that he's made these changes on the copies and they have been distributed to us. Would you, uh, on the original, go ahead and put your initials besides those changes, just to have that verification?
Got it.
All right, thank you. Uh, we would look to set a hearing date probably at our first meeting in May. Would be May the sixth, which will be less than forty days. That okay with everyone? All right, May, May the sixth at seven forty five.
She says it's.
Maybe by then she can stay home with that.
That took a little longer than thirty seconds, but thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Seven forty five, yeah, it is seven forty five, so. We need that. Time has arrived. We've indicated we would open the hearing, reconvene the hearing on application HTZC twenty four oh two at seven forty five. Therefore, to recess a regular meeting, which we will reconvene following the hearing. And with that, would you call the roll so that we can open the, reconvene the hearing?
Tom Neer.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
There.
Jenny Manson.
Here.
Gina Lewis.
Here.
Okay, we are back in session on the hearing for application HTZC twenty four oh two and we have received materials that we had requested because of the hearing of the application being identified as being incomplete last time. So the new materials have arrived. And. We'll be back when we pick up that process when we left it off. For members of the public who are here and who are online, what we will be doing tonight as we continue the review of this application is the zoning commission will determine if the application now contains all the required information. If the required property owners were notified and if the proposed district meets, if the request meets the requirements of the proposed district. And then also if it is in compliance with the township comprehensive plan. We do not, we are not required to, they are not required to submit and we do not review specific pleas for the lot. Uh, we don't necessarily have information regarding driveways, septic systems, or surface water drainage. That will all come later as the process continues forward. Rezoning involves multiple steps and our hearing is the first step in the process. Our recommendation regarding whether to recommend approval or not to the, we'll go to the township trustees. The trustees are responsible for making the decision of whether or not the request for the change in zoning is approved. If it is approved, then the applicant must go to county health department in order to have approval for septic system, Delaware County Regional Planning Commission for plat approval, Delaware County Regional Planning Commission and the County Engineers Office for Driveway Location, County Engineers Office and Soil and Water Conservation District for Drainage. The Township Zoning Inspector will be responsible for issuing a zoning permit. And when he does that, he will review the approvals of the other agencies before granting a zoning permit for the property. When construction occurs, the property owner must provide pursuant restraint, that complies with the plan and does not increase water flow onto a neighbor's property. If a neighbor has a concern about drainage, they may contact the zoning inspector, but he has no authority in terms of direct dealing with that, but would simply make a referral to the appropriate agencies. All right, folks, let's go back to where we were. We've already, we've got a new application that's been filled out because there were changes that needed to be made. This, uh, it's not a change except in the amount of acreage, there is a slight change. And it is signed. We also had noted that there were some extra names on the people to be notified and that's been updated, I see. So we have now twelve names of neighbors and they are identified on the accompanying map that's been provided. The specific zoning request is for two point eight five four gross acres zoned agriculture residential currently to be changed to farm residential. The net acreage in terms of what is present on the property, when the road right of ways and easements are removed, amounts to two point seven three three acres. Now going through the rest of the application. Members of the commission, was the correct legal description furnished in text and map and do they reinforce each other?
Yes.
Everyone is in agreement with that? Very good. Can I be adjoining, adjacent, adjoining contiguous and across from property owners been notified? I'll come back to you. Yes, there were any letters returned?
Was to a lender and then I found another address and it was not returned.
Oh, well, good.
And did you find an address for the property that's just listed as SREI fund?
That was the one. So that took a couple of letters and one was returned and two I sent were not. I wanted to make sure I know there were three different addresses.
Okay.
So I sent it to all three. Only one was returned.
Well, the lender probably won't return yours, but then the other one went to the business address of SREI probably. Very good. Let me ask the audience, are there any members present who were non notified, property owners present who were non notified, adjacent contingent across from property owners present? Seeing none. Any questions from the folks that are online relating to this? I hear no comment and nothing's coming in online. All right. Members of the commission, were there any other possible errors noted now that we have the new information?
I was just wondering, Rebecca is your mother, right? Do you have power of attorney since she's not here? Can we have that?
I also have the updated check if you guys would like.
That goes to her.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, did you pick up the other check?
Yes.
All right, so this, now this is the check to me now for two point eight five four acres.
That's correct.
Is there just one copy of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Have the notarized statement.
Yeah.
All right, we'll have the record reflect that the notarized statement from Rebecca Stern has been provided. And her signature is on the application. Any other questions or comments from zoning commission members? Last time I read the recommendation that came from Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, do you need me to review that with you?
It's not strictly applicable to the new parcel, but I think contingencies would be important to put into the record. Two contingencies in the Delaware County Regional Planning.
One was a ship drive, right?
One was to do the paperwork so that the ship, the driveway that there is now becomes a shared driveway. I don't think there's any argument about that. I think that's part of what her plan was. Uh, it's simply a matter of getting the paperwork right so that if the box was changed, hence, there's still a driveway to both parcels.
That will come back to us for approval. That will be approved through regional planning.
Uh, the other, one of the other contingencies of, but I don't, you want to, you want to read them from the, why?
All right, yeah, I did again here, let's see. New materials. Staff recommends conditional approval with the two object, uh, conditions as you specified, you've mentioned the driveway served as a shared access point. And then the other one was proposed lot and area to be rezoned should be reconfigured so that back to the flag lots are not created, back to back driveways for flag lots are not created and both lots meet all FR one and general development zoning requirements.
And you've already done that.
Yeah.
You reconfigured the lot and so that contingency is already part of the new plan. I do have two others that I would like to discuss. Um, one is in the Regional Planning Committee Report under comprehensive plan. It says, it reads goals and objectives. Goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan include protecting and buffering Duncan Run, which meanders across the overall site and is protected by regulatory flood plain. Requested here's to the plan recommendations as a minimal, as the minimum lot size is met. Then it says, and with reference to the old configuration, there is approximately six tenths acre of developable area within the required setbacks and outside of the flood plain. Um, I would simply ask that when we approve this or recommend this to the trustees, that we recommend it to the contingency that you continue to take the drainage and the flood plain into account as required by the comprehensive plan. There are buffering setbacks in the comprehensive plan, I think maybe even in the zoning resolution, the general development standard of that, that you need to be aware of and you need to take into account when you cite the house. Okay. Um, and then the last contingent, contingency, I would say is that if we give you approval, uh, that would be contingent for some period of time, twelve or eighteen months. Give you enough time to split it, but if the split does not go through, I would say the rezoning should expire.
There cannot be two zonings on the same property and basically that's what will happen. We'll have the AR one zoning, which is still in effect on the whole twenty one plus acres. And then we'll have an FR one zoning that will go into effect, but it will only go into effect once the lot split happens. And that's why Mr. Need is now suggesting that when we get to a motion, if there's a motion to approve, he'll need to make that part of the motion as a contingency.
Is there a problem with that?
Okay. Any other questions or comments from commission member? Here we're done, then let's open it up to the public. And are there any public comments regarding this request for rezoning? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Jeremiah Burns, fifty five ten Miller Paul. Uh, I'm, I'm, let's see, which way am I to you? His, this, this house is in my backyard, basically. It's his property, but the woods is, is, uh, where he's concerned, the house is, is right out my, my back window. Uh, I guess my concern is what the placement of the house. Um, is it going to be up closer to your mom's place or is it going to be, uh, you know, back next to me? I mean, we, we've been here four years and we, we come from the subdivision and we, we want, we, we come to, to get away from people, you know, to be away from the neighbors and so, uh, you know, I just got a real fear that you're, you're just going to be right there, you know? And I, it's your property. I get it. You know, you, you, you want to, you got twenty acres there. You want to build a house. You know, your mom's got a place there. I would do the same thing if I could. But my concern is just where that place and that house is going to be. And I, I know we talked before and you said it was going to be up, up close to your mom's place, but I just, I just really got a concern over that. What of the placement of the house and then, and then you talking about the driveway, uh, doing a shared driveway, it sounds like for now, but in the future, it could be a driveway that, that runs right up against my property.
If, no, Delaware County has requested that they do a shared driveway and then once that goes through, the way our zoning is currently, you can't do back to back flag lots. And so if they tried to split into a second driveway, it would be two flags beside each other, which is not allowed.
So there, if there, if you do a, a shared driveway, there'll never be another driveway that, that could go in there?
No, that shared driveway would serve the lot that we're talking about of two point seven acres, net acres, and then it would also serve as the driveway for the larger lot.
So hypothetically, if our zoning changed, it could allow for that, but as our zoning exists right now, another driveway could not be placed there.
Yes, if you're talking about another driveway.
Yeah, another driveway.
Yeah, as, as Mrs. Lewis is pointing out, no, there won't be another driveway. They'll have to use the existing driveway that we're talking about tonight. That will serve both the smaller lot and the larger lot. And if at some point in the future, they want to subdivide the larger lot, they would have to come back to get that rezoned. But the lot, the location of the driveway would move.
Like I said, you know, it, it's your, your guys' land, uh, you know, I, I, I have, I, I have very little, no saying whatsoever. I just, I'd just like to voice my concern, you know, where the, where the house would be placed.
The, the zoning question before us is really land use.
Sure.
Uh, it's not the site of the house itself, and I think that should be between neighbors.
I appreciate it.
Now, you can follow up with them as they continue to move the process forward because that will all have to be approved in terms of as they move their plans forward, they'll have to get approval from other agencies.
Yeah.
Or location. Because of septic system, that will make some, that will have an impact on where the house can be located.
Sure.
So you certainly, I've seen them nodding, so they're, they're not, uh, indicating any kind of disagreement with the concern that you have, so they'll, it sounds like they will work with you. Any other questions or comments from the public? All right, hearing done, then we'll close the public portion of the hearing and come back to the zoning commission for any further comments or questions and then we move the process forward. What were the additional questions?
Just to add to my point about if zoning changes in the future, it could hypothetically allow that.
Yeah, everybody's about to.
That. Well, yes, but as far as the township is concerned right now, a zoning change would be us meeting, talking about it, approving it here, and then it would have to go to the trustees to get approved. And it goes through the whole referendum process when we do language changes, correct?
Yes.
So, so there are several steps that would have to be taken. It's not like we can just say at some meeting, oh, let's just allow back to back flag lots. So if the township considered changing that, it would go through a whole process that I would imagine would be met with a lot of public pushback, so I wouldn't be too concerned about the threat of zoning potentially changing as far as flag lots are concerned, if we remain Harlem Township. If Westerville happens, all bets are off. I can't answer that.
We're still talking about retaining existing zoning.
Yes, yes, but.
For a period of time.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody's.
What's, what's my?
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding this application?
Just to be picky about it. And for the, for the, for the record and for future commissions, um, the parcel ID is called out, which is the existing parcel ID for the twenty one and a half acre parcel. And, and I suggested we change that to two point eight five four acres of that parcel ID, just so it's clear in the paperwork. That was not the entire, that we're not rezoning the entire parcel. I, I could be getting too picky here, but.
Yes, I mean, it does say gross acreage to be rezoned, to net acreage to be rezoned. So it's just to be rezoned.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're only rezoning two point eight five four acres.
The way to.
And that is specified on the application. The rest of the acreage remains AR one.
Don't you want to do the answer? You want to give me?
No, I don't remember all your contingencies.
All right, and you want the. Oh, you've got it, I think. Is that?
Yeah.
Read it from it there or you need more?
I've got my own notes.
Okay. The contingencies were from the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission's recommendations.
So I make a motion that inasmuch as application HTZC twenty four dash zero two conforms to the intent of the Harlem Township Comprehensive Plan and appears to meet all applicable aspects of the Harlem Township Zoning Resolution, I move that the Harlem Township Zoning Commission recommend to the Harlem Township Board of Trustees said application be approved with the following three contingencies. One. Yeah. So. That the driveway for both parcels be a shared driveway with the proper paperwork. Two, uh, that sufficient protections for the Duncan Run watershed and, and flood plain uh, be put in place. And that completion of the lot split occurs within twenty four, I'm sorry, twelve months.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, moved by Tom, seconded by Virginia. Members of the commission, would you like the motion read again?
No.
No, be fine. All right. Is there any further discussion on the motion? There are none. Hearing none, then we'll call for a vote. It'll be a roll call vote. Ms. Hamer, would you complete the roll call vote, please? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries five oh. So we will be recommending and submitting that recommendation to the trustees for their approval. That will, that recommendation will move forward to them. Um, it won't. It won't get there before their meeting. Well, no, it will get there before their meeting uh, this month. At that time, they won't take action other than potentially to set a hearing date for their hearing. Because they also will have to hold a hearing. Once that hearing is completed and a decision is made, if they make a rec, if they approve it. Then the approval will go into effect with it after thirty days. If there are no, uh, if there is no petition filed to. Put a referendum on the ballot for the public to consider. So that would mean if they take action and set the hearing date for. They would set the hearing date potentially in May, so that the approval could then be finalized in June. To know exactly when the hearing date's gonna be for the, the trustees will hold. What you should do would be to either uh, continue to check the website. Because it will be posted on the website, or you can call the trustee office and ask. Uh, at that time, when the, after the meeting this month, when the hearing will be held. You can go to the meeting if you would prefer to do that as well on Wednesday of the, uh, it's the third Wednesday of this month is their regular meeting.
Seventeenth.
It's the seventeenth. Thank you, Joni. Uh, what we will try to do in terms of the minutes so that we can of course, push those forward for the trustees. Is the minutes for the hearing uh, that we have completed tonight. Will be brought back for the zoning commission to consider moving those minutes. At the next meeting and then they will go forward to the trustee along, to the trustees along with. The recommendation from us for approval of the application. You have any questions? All right, thank you. Let's entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing on application HTZ C twenty-four oh two.
I'll make a motion to adjourn hearing, uh, HTZ C twenty-four oh two.
Right, thank you, and a second. Brittany, okay. Seconded by Brittany. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Okay, the hearing's adjourned and now we will go back to our, our regular meeting and reconvene.
Do you have each other's numbers?
Welcome to the township.
Thank you. Thanks for so much.
We need to call the other meeting back to order, sorry, me again. He's gonna call the other meeting back to order?
I will, I certainly will, just reorganizing my papers here.
Yeah, I know.
Our regular meeting will be called back to order now and at uh, eight. Eight twelve, okay. And would you call the roll again?
Mr. Nate?
Yeah.
Ms. Popper?
Here. Is in the hall.
She's here, she's in the hall, the baby.
When we get back into things, I would invite everybody to um, the next noodle dinner at the Grange, April twenty-sixth. There's a flyer of events on the table over there if you're interested.
All right, thank you, Jude.
April twenty-sixth.
More reports, uh, the director of zoning is not present. Uh, I don't have anything additional uh, to report tonight. Joe, you've already made your announcement about the noodle dinner, anything else?
Um, no.
Okay.
Not related to the zoning stuff.
Uh, Tom?
Uh, I just want to repeat that tomorrow, uh, at six thirty PM in this room. Uh, there'll be a special presentation from the Strategic Planning Committee. On uh, annexations, overlay districts and economic development tools. Exciting. Uh, but I think it'll be a good opportunity to uh, give us more opportunity to dig deep into what's involved with, with those. Those things.
All right, thank you. That meeting starts at six thirty, correct?
Correct.
All right, any members, uh, other members, that leaves you.
Public questions?
Uh, if there are any questions from the public. Of a general nature, we can entertain those at this time.
Yes, yeah, it'll be here and it will be on Zoom. And then the presentation itself will be posted to the township website. You'll be able to go back through it and say, what did she really say? Because it's a lot of information.
And that usually comes through in terms of a presentation. And that information, as far as the audio is concerned, is usually very good. Because she's got a microphone close by. Sometimes the members of the public speak and if they're not look to, uh, towards the microphone. They may even not be able to hear the question or their comment. Okay, um, we've gone through the reports at this time. We had a bunch of minutes that uh, we've been trying to catch up on, so folks, it's. That's what we're gonna be dealing with next. We have um, five sets of minutes. That we have received and reviewed. It may not, it may go very quickly. I don't know, but we're gonna find out. They've been reviewed online and comments have been submitted to uh, to Samo and she has uh, made the adjustments. Based upon the, the corrections that were suggested to her. So with that in mind, let's start with December eleventh. It's a workshop move on December eleventh and. We're so far behind with that simply because the previous uh, zoning assistant resigned unexpectedly. And we ended up. As Hamel had to go through the uh, uh, videotape and. Generate the minutes from that meeting, so that's took a very long time to get that accomplished. So folks, let's take a look down at December eleven. Anybody have anything additional beyond what you've already submitted? Because I'm correct when I say uh, Valerie, that you've made all the changes that you had received.
I was okay with all those changes. Ready for me to make a motion?
Anytime.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the December eleventh minutes as we have corrected them previously.
Okay. And I heard a, a second from Brittany. Have a motion to approve the minutes for December eleventh by Joni and a second by Brittany. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Aye. Opposed, no? The motion carries for zero. Ms. Lewis is out of the room. Okay, December eleventh approved. The next one on the list is February twelfth. And we can take a motion to approve these and then we can have discussion.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of this February twelfth as we have previously corrected them.
Second.
Moved by Joni, seconded by Brittany. Discussion on the motion. Any additional questions or comments regarding the minutes? If there is no further discussion. All for a vote. Hearing none, and all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes uh, of February twelfth. They signify by saying aye.
All right.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, these minutes are also approved. Uh, the next minutes are the regular meeting of March the fourth. Zoning Commission Regular Meeting, March fourth.
I don't remember. There was. Something that we looked at that you had sent us that there were a couple of places I didn't understand and I just put a note in.
On the fourth?
I don't remember when you went here, when it was. Anytime I put something in, in red in brackets, it's because I couldn't figure out what was being said.
I don't see any in the regular meetings, Joni.
No, I'm just gonna brush.
It was in the hearing.
It was in the hearing.
There was one that I didn't understand either and I didn't remember saying that, so I took it out. It didn't make any sense. Oh, no, it wasn't, it wasn't in either of these, actually. I think it was in.
I remember seeing that note.
Remember seeing.
Yeah.
That in your email.
It was, it was in the, Joni, there's one in the uh, February twelfth minutes. It's almost at the end.
Yeah, there were.
It says, Miss Lewit asked commit, if the commission would like to hear more of her notes. From a previous discussion of eight yard sales and then it said something that didn't make sense and I said something like. About a timing. I was like, I don't know if that is relevant.
I didn't recall her saying anything about yard sales.
She did say something about yard sales. She's like, I've got some notes or something.
Yeah, because at one point we had added that in from another section. We had talked about adding it in, but we didn't actually add it in.
Yeah.
Was that one we just approved?
Yeah.
Twelve has been approved.
Twelve has been approved. I think it's okay how it is, though.
Move to have it reconsidered. If there's something on here that needs to be changed.
Oh, there it is. I said, it says, Ms. Popper asked if length, length of time allowed for a yard sale with it done. Know what that meant and I actually took it out on the one on. On the website or the link of Mikes.
Oh, so you deleted it.
I deleted it.
In the file version, it's not in here then.
It is in. It is in here, but it shouldn't be.
Oh, it's still in here?
Yeah. Yeah, because I didn't remember what that said and that sentence didn't make sense. Yes.
It's pages aren't numbered. It, I think the paragraph we're talking about is this one, the page?
Yeah, I see it's page five. Ms. Lewis asked.
Starts, Ms. Lewis asked if the commission would like to hear more of her notes from a previous discussion of.
See, this is the end.
Eight meaning, um, article eight.
This one.
So see, it didn't come in, did it come in this one?
No, it didn't. Where is that? Yeah, it didn't redline for some reason.
We could just leave them, because I'm.
I mean. Oh, yeah, I was saying, I don't know if it really matters that much. It's just like, it still doesn't make any. I just don't know what it means.
Minutes from tonight that we questioned if we should have approved that in our minutes from then and then.
It's just, yeah.
So this one, um. Article eight, we haven't approved yet in terms of making the recommendation to move it forward. Article eight is uh, FR one. But we haven't approved that yet to move it forward. I'm talking about when we meet with Scott.
Yeah.
March.
So if there is any kind of an issue with this. Virginia.
We'll still, we'll still have a chance.
We'll have an opportunity to discuss it.
No, I think we can leave it in the minutes like it is since we already approved them.
Okay.
All right.
I'm okay with being quoted as saying something that doesn't make any sense.
It was actually, I feel like it was the sentence of what I said, it didn't make any sense. I don't know, I don't know what I said.
I know.
Back and listen to the tape.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, back to March the fourth.
So March the fourth on the, what is it, one, two, third page? Third paragraph down, Ms. Lewis asked when the home building would start. Mr. Clay stated sometime in the spring of twenty twenty-four. Did, that's now. I think he said either spring of twenty twenty-five or fall of twenty twenty-four, because he said they were putting crops on the field this season.
Yeah, it might be spring.
For which he said if it was spring of next year or fall of this year, but.
I think he said spring twenty-five, but.
I know he did not say spring of twenty-two.
I just know that it's not happening now.
It's left, so we can't ask. I mean, we're already past spring.
Yes.
So.
Well, intuitive.
Well, we got another month or two, but.
Yeah.
Until those, it's some, formally summer begins in late June.
Sometime in the near future.
Sometime in the future. I wouldn't put near on there. Who knows?
Within the next twelve months.
We can say sometime within the next year.
Yep.
That work?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, any other corrections or questions about these minutes? I don't know what I did, can't shift. He might have said something about summer. I'm starting.
No, because I won't. He definitely said they were planting.
Yeah.
So it, and that will.
Yeah, he went so bad.
Will come off until the fall of this year. So it, it was probably, he said spring of twenty twenty.
Can I think of back in the.
We're gonna change it so we can approve them tonight. I don't want to hold them open unless there's an objection from someone.
I think we can go with within the next twelve months.
All right. So that's a correction we're going to make within the next twelve months.
I changed some, hold on, let me double check something because I changed something, but now I'm looking at it and it didn't track my changes. Oh, I have trouble with tracking. So I know sometimes it just like doesn't work and I. It's, uh.
Are you gonna be able to go to the, uh, April fifth? Roundabout me, this one for the trustees?
April the fifth.
I didn't know anything about that.
Where do you see that? It's in the minutes. It's on the first page.
I, oh, we're good. We got it. We got what I was looking for.
It's on the first page.
At the bottom.
It's Friday.
Yeah, I can't do that.
Yeah, well, I can't go. It's in the morning. Yeah. I have a doctor's appointment. Is there having it eight in the morning?
At eight P M?
I know, not eight P M. I can make eight P M.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll put it in my calendar.
All right, good. Then you can go as a report.
Yes. So this is Friday the fifth.
Well, and you can also then give a, Bruce McPerry may be there.
I'll check with Bruce.
Yeah, he should. He knows about it.
If that's a good catch, Johnny, because I would have. Not.
Any other, um, corrections to these minutes from March the fourth, regular meeting?
No.
Done. Virginia, okay now?
I'm good.
All right, then, well, how about a motion to take action on March fourth minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March fourth as previously corrected.
Second.
All right, Brittany again. March the fourth as. Further discussion? Hearing none?
I hear a lot of discussion going on.
Uh, there's a lot of something going on, yeah. Might, might be dinner time. All, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Motion is approved. Unanimously. Okay. Right, the minutes for the first part of the hearing that we held and we concluded tonight.
Did we see these before?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you made, you've already made some correct.
Yeah, you made. I know, there really was. I can't remember what they were.
These were sent along with all the others, yes. The lady's name was changed in, in all of them because, uh, I know, I know who she is and uh, the last name was not correct. Hard to, hard to understand.
I do have one. Um, that I didn't see before, uh, it's in this paragraph here. I'm just gonna tell you.
On the second page, the paragraph story with.
Mr. Mead, yeah, in the, at that's kind of the end, it says adjacent contiguous and across from, I think we need to add adjoining in there, right?
Yes.
Adjacent, adjoining, yeah. That, sorry, I did not catch that.
I didn't.
In thing I sent.
Hey, so we're adding the word adjoining because that is the language that we have in our zoning resolution. Or I'm sorry, it's in our, uh, procedures, not the, not the resolution. Adjacent, adjoining, contiguous and across from. So you stick the word adjoining in there between adjacent and contiguous.
It's, it's poetry.
Any other additions or corrections?
Uh, but that reminds me, I don't think any of us, uh, confirm the value of the stern check.
I got one, I, I thought I fixed it, maybe I didn't. On the second page, the hearing was not adjourned. The hearing was continued.
You want to give the actual?
Yeah, because we've got the date up here. To recess the hearing until April one. But then the next line says, was adjourned, it should have said recessed.
It was a lot of minutes to do.
Yes, and it ended. But it was a recess in that case.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, minutes for hearing HTZ C twenty four O two on March fourth as corrected.
It would be my pleasure to second that.
All right, Brittany. You're on a roll tonight.
Yeah. Pass through these minutes.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing done and all in favor, please signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right, motion is approved. As corrected, the minutes of March the fourth, the hearing minutes. And then we are looking at the zoning commission workshop meeting minutes for March eleven. It's great, get caught up.
I didn't have anything, uh, new, though.
I've got one, one word. Um, the first paragraph after under old business. Starts, Mr. Kabler discussed net acreage density and gross. As well as net density developable acreage. Developable acreage is in red. I think the word density.
And the dense should be the long. Net developable.
Sorry?
So it should say net developable acres, the word density should come out.
The word density means.
Yeah, so that's at the end of that line.
The second density.
So the sentence will read, Mr. Kabler discussed net acreage density and gross as well as net. Remove the word density and leave developable acreage. And I think that was the only other change that I.
Great. If there are no additional questions or comments about these minutes, then a motion to approve. Whenever.
The minute, workshop minutes of March eleventh as corrected.
Second.
All right, thank you very much again. Any further discussion? So hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of March eleven as corrected. They signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No? All right, the minutes are approved for March eleven. And as of tonight, then, we are caught up.
All right.
That's a relief. Yeah, that'd be a relief for you too.
Oh, yeah.
You've been working on catching us up for the last two months.
Yes, thank you.
All right, very good. Uh, and back to our agenda. Under old business, I listed one item, uh. And I was hoping Mike would be here, but he's not here due to his wife's, uh, his replacement. But the permit for approval of variance and unconditional use, what I really I think when our, in our discussion before, we, we were in favor of having that. Do you guys, I won't be at next week's workshop meeting, but do you want to spend any time discussing it then? Working on it? That's mean, I'm only bringing it up for your consideration.
Is that the one that Scott's not coming to?
Right.
Right.
Then I think we could.
Is Mike gonna be there?
Probably not.
Probably not. I don't think he wants to hear this time.
Yeah.
He doesn't usually come for.
Yeah, he definitely.
I mean, if there's going to be one, I think it's the B Z A that needs to write it.
We're not going to approve it. Right, it's, you're correct. I agree with you. It's the B Z A. And it's the permit, but Mike will be the person who will be issuing it. But it ties back to the fact that it's in our, um, it's mentioned identified as such in the zoning resolution. So either we take it out or we leave it in and that means they need to create one. And we had discussed that before. Just to confirm, we're still of a, of a, the opinion that it should remain, right? We, we think there should be a permit.
Yeah, I think so. I think to do, to do something without any sort of record seems.
All, all, all is, the record has existed in the past, has been the minutes.
Yeah, that seems like poor record keeping.
Well, and trying to find it later is impossible in some cases.
Has been.
So, yeah, I think it would be very helpful to have such a thing. I hope we need to.
I don't know whether Mike will be there or not, but probably will not be in attendance, so. If he's not there, again, it's not something that we should discuss without him. And it's gonna be him and the B Z A that needs to do it.
I think it's him and the B Z, Mike and the B Z A that should write it since it's their, the document that they're gonna have to use.
Yeah, where it impacts us is whether we leave it in the zoning resolution or.
I think we've decided we would.
We want it in.
We wanted it, so.
So now we're gonna at, basically say to them, we need you to develop a permit.
Yes.
But we need it to have the title that we've called it in the resolution so that they match up.
I think that's what it says in the resolution.
Yeah.
But we can verify that.
Yeah, so give them a blank paper with the proper name at the top and say, here, make.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that that's what, it is called a permit in the resolution. In the draft that we, we haven't approved it yet in terms of the changes that we're making. So, but we're all still of the same view there collectively.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
All right, um, I'll send, I'll send a message to Mike with a copy to Keith because he's the current chairperson, I believe, right?
I don't, I don't, Jim is, I don't know who is.
Yeah, so I'll, uh, that this language is in the zoning resolution, but you don't have one, so we need you to develop one.
So there is no form for that?
No.
Currently there isn't, but there should be.
There should be.
So I'll send a message to that effect and let, let it move forward from there and that'll take us, it off of our uh, agenda in terms of discussion item.
Right.
And yeah, it should be, it should be on our calendar somewhere so we don't lose track of it.
Right.
But.
Someone online is asking, what is the proposed permit for?
Variances or conditional uses? Which are B Z A.
It's for the functions, yeah. Conditional use or, uh, their experience.
They said, thank you.
There's only, those are the only two things that the B Z A would have a permit for. All right, um, and next week we're going to spend the meeting working on forms. Well, basically it comes down to.
So is it these forms?
Overlay application, right?
Overlay application.
Just going through and verifying it's the way that you want it or we want it. I've already given you my input and when I looked at what you had forwarded, it had those changes in it.
Yeah. And yes, I, I do think we still need to keep the, the neighboring properties.
Yeah, I made that comment back to her too. Well, you guys are gonna have a lengthy discussion about that.
Sure, we'll make it when I need.
Yeah.
Don't need to.
Well, uh, our meeting in May.
There's some other things we need to probably look at.
One of the, one of the topics that we had brought up previously was that there would, there was a need to have something in our zone resolution to address, um, solar panels. We don't have it.
No, we did, we didn't do solar when we did wind.
So I thought, oh, um, we could do would be to suggest to Scott that he bring to us, uh, at that May meeting a draft of taking the, our existing, um, alternative energy stand, uh, article and adding solar panels to it.
Did Delaware County already ban solar panels? I mean, some counties have.
Industrial and this is residential.
Yeah, this is just a small.
Oh, okay.
And that's not talking about solar panel farms. We're talking about somebody wants to put them on their house. Remember Mike brought that up as an issue. Because we don't have anything in the zoning. So he's just dealing with it as an accessory building. In terms of issuing a permit so that they can uh, move forward with it. Whether it's gonna be on the roof, uh, set aside, you know, wherever it might be to provide electricity for the, it's personal use.
Yeah, I think we should address it.
So that would be, if there's one already out there that somebody else has drafted, we can just bring that in.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
But it would be added to our alternative systems. It would make sense that that's where it would go.
Sure.
Okay. I'll, I'll follow up with him on that then.
Okay.
Hey, that's it as far as I'm.
Yeah, he's, he's doing something, he's bringing in the stuff we've projected for, um, articles seven and eight, right?
Yes, seven and eight and, um, E C D.
Okay.
And we were, hopefully we'll be able to maybe get those finalized. So we, the new one would, would then end up being the, uh, solar panels. That won't be until May. He's not coming any.
No.
All right, I have nothing else. Any, anyone else for the good of the order?
Just to call out that I did send, oh, wait, I did send the editable forms uh, to Valerie to upload onto the website so people can type in now.
Yes. I job.
I know I said it a little bit late, so.
Yeah, yesterday or the day before, maybe.
Yesterday, yeah, it was. Yeah, so, no, that's okay. I just wanted to let everybody know, so we'll be.
There's no change, uh, which is what you pointed out in your email.
Right.
No change, it's just taking the same form and making it something that can be filled out online.
Yep, yes.
And the three articles with, with Scott, AR one.
AR, AR seven, eight, FR one and, uh, it's article seven and eight. I'll get it right in a minute. And then, um, thirteen, is it thirteen? No.
P R D.
Here, P, yeah, P R D.
All right.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Have a motion to adjourn. It's our second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Yeah.
Aye. We are adjourned. Yeah, very good. I'm very appreciative of, uh, the work that you've done, Valerie, getting all these minutes caught up for us. And we'll, we'll, we'll. I don't have a problem with it.
Break it up that's, what is it?
Well, because we raised the fee.
Now we got our, we, we.
The fee, the application fee.
Got a commission.
Put time, put in for that.
Well.
Is it, was that the reason that we raised the fee?
I signed it, but it's a short paper. You probably, you probably put it on a long paper to put it in the book, right?
I kept it on, you know. I feel like that was supposed to go to us.
Right.
Like, we're supposed to be part of.
Now, reducing.
For paying for.
Very good. Thank you.
Director. This has been for you.
Thank you.
And those reasons. We may have gotten that, right? Just, you know, they usually do that every year.
Yeah, I'll get it eventually, just.
Yeah, I'm so glad to get caught up on those minutes. It'd be a lot less confusing now about the minutes.
Can you, uh, hold her so I can get some food or do the dishes or something? Like, how do you think they get done?